Let's call the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded. Seeing no one else recording this meeting, if you'd please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone, or one. We do have a very special recognition. I'm Dr. Brunel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So it is my pleasure to introduce to you, Dan, if you want to go over to the podium, Mr. Dan DeLongchamp. He was selected unanimously as the successor to Mr. Hanfield when he assumes the role of superintendent. So as noted in the packet, Mr. DeLongchamp has spent 26 years in Sutton as a special educator, assistant principal of both middle and high school levels. Important to note, he is a 1989 graduate of Auburn High and has the highest reverence for Auburn High School and our district. As you may know, his dad, Jerry DeLongchamp, was a longtime member of the faculty of Auburn High and very well revered by colleagues, not only here but across the area, ending his career as assistant principal of the high school. So we're very excited. I do want to thank the interview team for giving up their full day on Saturday and offer my most hearty congratulations to Dan, so I share him with you.
All right. Excellent. Welcome, Dan.
Thank you very much.
Great to have you. If you'd like to just tell us a little bit about yourself, I know you already went through at the interview, but just a brief description of what you've been up to for the past few years for the people watching at home.
Sure, absolutely. So I want to say thank you very much for having me tonight. This is an incredible honor to be going back home and being able to have this experience here and being able to lead in the very place where I began. The fact that I was, I think a lot of what I am today has a lot to do with what Auburn High School is all about. It drew me to the school when the posting came out. As far as what I've been doing, I've been, as Dr. Brunel mentioned, I've enjoyed my time in Sutton. It's been a great experience. I have a wonderful team around me. Again, when I looked at Auburn, that was something that was incredibly attractive to me, the fact that there is a wonderful team in place. When I reached out to community members, all I heard was positives about the faculty, about the facility, about the programs that are in place, about the fact that I don't get the sense that Auburn settles. They're always looking to try to support every student, and those things mean a lot to me. And I'm very, very excited.
Excellent. Thanks for that introduction. Any questions or comment for Mr. Longchamp?
Welcome to Auburn. You're right, I mean, we do have an amazing school system. I went to the old Auburn High School as well, so it was a big step up over there. So we're very happy that you're here. And your dad, my brother had him, so.
Oh, wonderful. I really appreciate it. I'm really looking forward to it. I can't wait to get started. I'm gonna try to, I'm gonna try to show my face at a lot of games this spring and just to try to meet people and watch and listen and learn. And I think that's what I'm gonna spend a lot of time doing over the next few months, so I can't wait to get started.
Excellent. Any other comments?
Well, I'm just glad to see you. I'm Gail Holloway. I work with your dad on the retiree organization. And when I heard, I mean, I had no idea who would be coming into Auburn High School. But when I heard it was you, I was like, ah, that's awesome. And you even have a room almost named after you, too.
We'll talk about that room another night. Well, thank you very much for your kind words. I really appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Hello again.
Hi, it's good to see you. Thank you for your time on Saturday, too. I appreciate that.
You're welcome. No, it's my pleasure, but I'm really excited to have you on board. And you seem like you're gonna fit right in, so.
Thank you so much. I can't wait.
As I said earlier, Dan, I heard great things about you before the interview. I wasn't part of the process. I imagine you did very well, but the family name speaks for itself. And it's funny, you made a comment similar to, like what Mr. Desto would say, his father would say to him, "Don't screw it up now," when he became a principal. And it's funny that you made a similar comment, saying, "Yeah, I don't want to screw up what my father's already accomplished." We're pretty confident that's not gonna be the case, as I'm sure you are, and it was a good joke, though.
I'm gonna try hard, for sure.
I enjoyed that. Dr. Brunel, did you have anything?
No, just congratulations. It was a, it was a well-deserved honor, and we're looking forward to have you.
Thank you for having me tonight. I appreciate that.
As the chair, we do have one of your students for next year, here.
Hi, how are you?
Yeah. It's in your next year.
It's a pleasure to meet you.
Yeah.
And that's all we have, Dan, so thank you so much for coming out. We look forward to working with you. And as you noted, you will get plenty of support, not only from this committee and the rest of the staff and leadership team in Auburn, but also the residents are so supportive of what we do here, so I think you came to a really good place.
Thank you so much. I'm looking forward to spending a lot of time here. Thank you, guys.
The team at the school is amazing, too.
Yeah.
It's great. Thank you.
Have a great evening.
You, too.
Thanks.
All right. Nice try. All right. That was nice. Moving on.
So I wanted to share with you some recognitions from three of our schools, Auburn High, Middle School, and Swanson. Their work is going to be on display, or I should say is on display, in the exhibits, the Higgins Education Wing of the Worcester Art Museum, through March 22. So Youth Art Month, as I noted here, is endorsed by the Council for Art Education and others. There will be a family reception on Sunday, March 22, from 12:30 to 2:30. And a nice compliment to that is the Auburn High Chamber Singers and Arca Rockets will be performing from 1:45 to 2:15. So we'd just like to recognize the students for their exemplary artwork. From Auburn High, we have Jamie Regan, Avery Bishop, Brian Bailey, and Crystalis Laverne. From the Middle School, we have Van Nguyen, Lexi Sins, Ivy Bowser, and Candace Blanchard. And from Swiss, we have Brody Coughlin, Ava Harry, Ava McKellick, and Delia Lambert. So congratulations to all of them for their truly great talents as artists.
Congratulations. And seeing no citizens to comment, we will now move on to the student representatives' report. Aaron?
So Ally is currently testing for becoming a senior instructor at McCoy's, so I was really excited for her. So carrying on her message, her and Griffin Hanfield, this, two weekends ago, attended UMass Ann Hurst with Congress and the Governor to talk about climate change, and they toured one of UMass's 100% green buildings, which Ally described as a recycling bin but in building form. She also noticed that rainwater was even filtered as drinking water, promoting that kind of renewable resources type idea with green building. And next week is the NHS induction ceremony. As president, she's been looking forward to this day for the last past year. This is kind of the moment that all NHS presidents look forward to. Tomorrow will be the all-town band concert, where grades five through 12 will be all performing tomorrow. And yesterday was a chorus concert, which same grades all performed yesterday. And today and tomorrow were Auburn High School's finals, so kind of stressful moment for all of us, but halfway done, so that's fine. And for my comments, Marty Yuan, this past weekend, had a very successful conference at Boston College High School. There's a lot of new members as DC High is one of the more rookie committees, as they separate their conferences into beginner, intermediate, and veteran. Caleb Reesager, a senior, and I both won awards in our respective committees. The class 2021, today, they held our first teacher fight night, where teachers kind of fight each other in a little ring in kind of like sumo suits. And it was really fun and really successful, and it was just a good time for all of us. This Friday, International Club, we're holding a teacher luncheon. They do it every single year, just, you know, as a PD does, a kind of nice thing, giving back to our teachers. Special Olympics this weekend was held at Auburn. It was really exciting and really, it was an amazing event for everyone attending, whether you were watching, whether you were a player or a volunteer. And about volunteering, a bunch of Auburn High School Student Council and NHS students volunteered, and it was a great turnout for all of us, also giving back to our community. And that's it.
Great. Lots of things happening there.
Yeah.
Congratulations on your award.
Thank you.
That's great. I'm sure well-deserved.
Yeah.
But what I really want to know more about is this teacher fighting thing.
Yeah, me, too.
Who fought?
So there was four rounds of teachers. So the first round was Mr. Bonaccio, who was just here two weeks ago, and Mr. DeClerc. Next was Mr. Tom Adams and Mr. James Adams. And then Ms. Griffin and Ms. Para fought. And there's one more teacher combination that I'm currently blanking on, but there was four rounds of teachers who fought in the gym. And it was really, I didn't get to go, I was in the middle of a driving lesson, which was kind of disappointing, but I saw like a bunch of videos on Snapchat, my friend sent it to me, and it's just kind of them fighting at a little pen. And then the most funny part, the funniest part, would be them trying to get out of the ring because they can't walk. So basically, they have to jump and roll. It was just a really nice moment to see like teachers outside the super professional scene and just having some fun after school with some students.
That's great.
Was this a fundraiser in any way?
Yeah.
Oh, it was?
Yeah, so our class is just 2021, trying to raise some money, so it's just like a $10 entry, same thing as Mr. Auburn, just kind of have some fun.
All right.
I think maybe you should have the main event with Mr. Hanfield in there. Maybe Mr. Hanfield against Mr. Sullivan from the high school or something.
There you go.
I'll fish that next year, definitely.
That would be a good one.
Yeah, definitely.
That'd be great.
If there's another one. Those are just my ideas.
You wanna go, let me know, and I'll go, too.
I wanna videotape it. Aaron, thanks for that report.
Thank you.
You're welcome to take off. I'm sure you have lots of homework to do and studying for finals.
Yeah, more finals tomorrow.
Yeah, second half. Well, good luck with that, too.
Thank you.
And I would now seek approval of the regular meeting minutes for February 26.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. And I would seek a motion for executive session minutes.
I'll make that motion.
For September 18. Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, September 18, October 10, and November 18.
I'll make that motion.
And still a second.
I have a second.
From Mrs. Harrington, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. And I would entertain a motion to accept the executive session minutes for January 8, January 23, February 20, March 21, June 11, May 7, July 30, October 15, and December 18, all of 2019.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. Can we now move on to the superintendent's report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So actually, when we first put this out, there was, we were bringing forward regarding out-of-state field trips. So you do have some, an addendum to the superintendent's memo. And as noted in here, and as many of you probably saw, Governor Baker held a press release, a press conference yesterday to declare a state of emergency, and noting in there that for the government, they were recommending no out-of-state work-related travel and to eliminate or minimize to the degree possible any large school gatherings and doing them virtually if possible. So there's been a number of discussions among superintendents about what does this mean and translate to for school districts. So as Dr. Chamberlain and I have been doing really closely, particularly since Monday around the coronavirus, but it really is just an extension of work that we always do with the town and the Board of Health, we've been in discussions with them. So earlier today, and we've been in conference calls with the Mass Department of Public Health, in addition to Governor Baker's announcement, and I even reached out to Representative Frost's office to seek some guidance around some things, to get clarity around Governor Baker's. So in looking at this, and important to note is Governor Baker's, excuse me, Representative Frost's office, they, after speaking to DPH, recommended that the band concert tomorrow night not go forward, particularly there, we have audience members of all ages, but certainly some that are older, grandparents and things. So one of the things that has come up from the Department of Ed Commissioner O'Reilly is to limit older people or try to discourage them from coming to large-scale events because they'd be one of the more vulnerable populations currently with coronavirus. But the first item on the recommended thing here is with regard to international travel. So that has been clear. You've probably seen that colleges around everywhere are not allowing kids to do international travel, so I think that is probably the easiest of one. I do want to share with you, so as you may know, the Costa Rica trip had been approved last year for April of this year. In speaking with Mr. Kramer, the request is that you vote to postpone that trip to April of '21, so that way he can work with the travel company and with the families, so that students, if approved, they can just roll that money forward. So just as a, to pause for a minute, also among the superintendents, there's been considerable discussion, and I signed on, as did most superintendents, to really reach out and press these travel companies, because whether or not people took insurance, and no one could have imagined when they started paying for these trips months and months ago that such an issue would occur, or that there would be, we heard today that the World Health Organization declared a global pandemic. So the parents may not get the full amount back. And as superintendents, and we're hoping that we can get some state legislators to sign on as well, to really try to pressure them that this is no fault of families and certainly of students, so they shouldn't bear the financial hardship of not getting their monies back. But I do ask that you take the vote for the Costa Rica trip, to postpone it at this time. The second piece is in following with Governor Baker's guidance regarding not doing out-of-state travel. And this one comes, you know, all of these decisions that you're gonna need to contemplate are not easy ones, because when the notice went out yesterday about the coronavirus, I heard from between yesterday and today, six parents in total. And there really weren't, there was appreciation for the notice that went out. Heard from several people and another one today that to please don't make the decision today to potentially cancel the Washington DC trip. That's the one specifically that I'd heard about, because it's not scheduled to happen until May. So I had asked Mr. Hanfield and Mr. Desto to get some information regarding if the DC trip for the middle school, and if the New York trip for the high school, and there's Roger Williams' trip for Swanson, there's a trip for some high school AP students to Newport, Rhode Island. And then we have a trip upcoming this weekend for the ski club students from the high school to attend Jay Peak. But with the larger trips, Mr. Hanfield actually spoke to Mr. Fox from Fox Tours today, and he actually said, you know, that many school districts are canceling that trip, and many school districts are canceling out-of-state trips, quite honestly. And I anticipate that number is likely to continue to increase. And Commissioner O'Reilly has a conference call with us tomorrow at 3:00, and we're hoping that there will be very clear guidance that is given, because everyone is, you know, so we're all making the same decisions. And what the parents said, you know, is that this would be heartbreaking for kids to miss, you know, the Washington DC trip, and I understand how that would be. But Mr. Fox had felt, even he felt, you know, that it is simply not worth the risk. And right now, he would be able to give a refund for all of it. He's actually had a conversation at 5:30 this evening with the hotel that they had given a deposit to. He's hopeful that they, too, would return those monies. But if this is to be canceled, it needs to be within the next week or so for a refund to happen. So, and I, you know, it saddens me, as I know with all of you, to do that. There is a seventh-grade trip to Boston that would go to a restaurant, a museum, and the Red Sox game. And based on the news that continues to come and evolve, it may even be a case that there may not be spectators in the stands. I don't know. You know, that's certainly how some of the colleges have played out. So there's that. But, and then, of course, Jay Peak is upcoming this weekend, but I think based on the guidance that's out there from the governor, I'm not sure how we can ignore that. And I think, you know, for the, for the planning that needs to take place, and in order to truly try to get back as much money as possible, and you can certainly vote to postpone them, what the town has said is they suspended all recreation activities, all library activities, and all senior center activities effective immediately for the next 30 days, and then to reassess. And that was really in the governor's guidance. What my recommendation is here is, should you choose to do it, is that if the recommendation from the governor changes, or if, you know, the situation just in general changes, I think we could revisit it. But, you know, for planning purposes, and certainly for Costa Rica, and certainly for the Jay Peak trip on Saturday night, and the Washington DC trip, I think those decisions need to be made this evening. The other piece is the large group gatherings. So we had the chorus concert last night to a packed crowd of people, based on Governor Baker's recommendation and based on local health and town discussions that we had today. And that's really the reason they canceled all of those functions, activities from those three organizations, is to suspend those, to include tomorrow night's Baker con, excuse me, I'm seeing his name here, band concert. And that we could certainly, and I would encourage us to say that we suspend those, because hopefully, those types of things, we'll have time to reschedule when the guidance changes.
I mean, the band concert used to be in June, so.
Right, right, right. So, but those are my recommendations, and open it up certainly for your discussion.
Well, based on what I saw on the news this evening before I came, people that went to the John Kennedy Center in Boston, and now the place is closed, they're now saying if you were here between March 3rd, maybe, to current time, you could have been exposed, because some employees have now come down with the virus, and I think we just can't be too careful with it. It's just popping up, and you don't expect it.
I agree. And some of the, and some of the phone calls or texts that I've been receiving from people saying, "Can you just please support this trip? Can we continue this trip? Can we do this trip?" And at first, I want to say, two days ago, I was thinking, yeah, we should, we should hold on to these as long as we can, and I don't think it's as much of a threat, but it's, and I, but my response to these people were, it's, things are changing by the hour, by the minute, so there are no guarantees. And sure enough, the very following day, everything's blown up. Now Harvard's closing down, MIT's closing down. And as I said to Dr. Brunel, there are certainly people at Harvard and MIT that are slightly smarter than I am, so I have to, I have to follow their lead. And it's everywhere now. Now it's Worcester Schools, now it's Holy Cross, they're closing down. There's a serious issue here. And as Dr. Brunel just mentioned, now it's, now it's become a global crisis. So I don't know, I think.
Excuse me, George, in one of the local districts, two of their bus drivers have tested positive for the disease. So that's exposed all those children that ride those school buses.
Right.
Is that local?
It was, I think, outside of Boston. But it was Massachusetts.
Yeah.
Do I think that, you know, if we rolled the dice and sent, sent some students away on a trip, whether it's to Boston, or skiing, or, you know, up in the mountains somewhere, might they be okay? Yeah, but if they're not, if someone comes back because someone from, from China had been sleeping in that room the week before them, or they're at the same time, they're rubbing elbows on the way out, they're taking, you know, are we gonna be able to sleep with our, you know, sleep with ourselves if someone gets sick? If someone comes home and gets their grandparent or their elderly parent sick? I just don't think, after all of these warnings, I think it would be very difficult for us to say, you know what, let's, let's give it a try. Let's, let's send them, you know, let's send them on the ski trip, or let's send them to Washington DC. We just, we just can't at this point. I feel terrible for the kids, and the same goes for the large gatherings, for the band concert. I feel terrible that the kids have been practicing so hard and not gonna be able to do that. It's, it's a sad occasion, but unfortunately, we're not the only ones. The way things have blown up today, it happened at my school, we had other visiting schools at our place today, they came for a special test, they went, they took the test, and they were out of there. No one has taken any chances, so.
So if we postpone the Washington DC trip, can we postpone them getting a refund back?
So my recommendation at this point, based on what Mr. Desto has learned, is you would need, they would need to cancel the trip in order to get a refund, and that would need to happen within the next week. So, and because it's eighth-grade students who go, and the date of it is somewhere towards the end of May, last year abutted Memorial Day, is it?
19th to the 22nd.
19th to the 22nd.
Yep, that's right. It's in the.
Okay. So I'm not, it's doubtful they'd be able to reschedule that, quite honestly, you know? And the thing is, and I think what parents' argument was, is to wait, because it may be over by then. And it may be, but if it isn't.
They're all out of all that money.
That money, you know, to do this and things. And I will say, you know, that Mr. Desto, this saddens all of us, including all of you here at this table, that what they would plan to do is to do some alternate, alternative, you know, fun event for the kids, because it's really kind of like their final thing that they do as a group. So they would certainly work to, whether they bring in some things and plan some things, but I think, as, you know, Mr. Scobie said, I think it's something at risk that sadly, I don't think we should take.
And I know, excuse me, I know some of the tour companies are offering vouchers instead of money back, but for eighth grade, a voucher won't do them any good, because they're not gonna be at the school next year, so.
Through the chair, they're not supposed to be within six feet, you know, there's a six feet.
Right. We should back up.
But, yeah, and I would be fine with postponing it, but with the money piece of that, and I'm not sure it will be completely gone by then, myself. I mean, I'm still one that I'm not, I'm not freaking out about this thing. On the other hand, you know, I have elderly people and people that, if these kids come home, they're a high-risk group. It's lower respiratory, it's pneumonia, so it's serious. And I would hate to see these families be out that kind of money. As much as I know that they would, you know, I would, I would feel awful if I was in eighth grade right now. It's a sad night, but all of these trips are.
The trip is almost $800, right? Yeah, so that's, it's not like, I mean, the Boston trip was $130 or something. And, you know, Claire's begging me, "Please don't cancel that." And I don't want to, and thank God.
Are you getting lobbied at home, huh?
I paid extra $10 for the insurance, but $800 is substantial. I think a lot of families have planned all year to send their kid there. That's just huge, so I don't know. I think it's a no-brainer.
Yeah, and the other piece to that, that Dr. Brunel had discussed with, with Mr. Desto, and I think that applies to some of these other trips as well, is, you know, if we can recoup some of this money, then we can, we could probably try to do something really special while keeping the kids safe, you know, whatever it might be, whatever we're opened up to, if it was, maybe it's a, maybe we could do a local field trip if things clear up a little bit by then, but we would have the funding to do that. So I'd hate to see the parents be out that kind of money. The quicker we can recoup those funds, and as Dr. Brunel said, in collaboration with other superintendents, and maybe having the governor sign on to it, maybe push these companies to make sure that we get all of our deposits back.
Yes.
And to the extent that we can, we'll show the kids, you know, a good time while keeping them safe, while ensuring the safety.
Yeah, I think it's important to stress, we are at the mercy of the governor and the state. So, you know, we can vote anywhere we want, but at the end of the day, we could say, yeah, let's push forward and do it, but he could come out tomorrow and say, absolutely no one is traveling, you know? So we better just cut our losses right now.
And not everyone is gonna be happy. And, Dr. Brunel, can I share the other message that you got yesterday, or?
Oh, about the chorus concert?
The chorus concert, not who, but what?
So.
Just as an example of what, what will or could happen.
Yeah, so I, yeah, you know, some, heard from a couple of parents that concern, you know, that should not hold that concert, it being, you know, irresponsible, and seemed to, you know, ignore Governor Baker's recommendation. The challenging part was, we got notice about that press conference happening, and we got it through the Superintendent's Association, but an hour or so, you know, before.
Right.
And, you know, what everyone was saying was, does that apply to us? Is it just, you know, government agencies and things? And those questions were addressed all today. And quite honestly, when I got home at 9:30 last night, it was one of the first times I saw the snippets of the press conference, you know, having been at the chorus thing, but, so, yeah.
Same here. So we're going to get that, we're going to get that either way. So if we went through with the concert tomorrow night, we would get that same feedback. And frankly, I wouldn't blame those parents, because it is being irresponsible. The writing is on the wall. It's. So, if we went through with the concert tomorrow night, we would get that same feedback. And frankly, I wouldn't blame those parents, because it is being irresponsible. The writing is on the wall. It's, again, I can't say it enough, this saddens us as a committee. I don't like making these decisions. I am one to roll the dice, and, and a couple of days ago, I was willing to, to roll the dice, but I'm just not anymore. It would look, not, not only could we not live with ourselves, but it would look pretty bad if we didn't heed these warnings.
Yeah, we would literally make the news for disobeying.
For all the wrong reasons, yeah.
But one more question, sorry, to backtrack a little. The Costa Rica trip postponing, I mean, we have the obvious problem. A lot of seniors were signed up for that trip, so we don't know what happens.
So, we don't, what I, Mr. Creamy has shared, and it depends on, there were tiers of insurance that they could take. So, what his plan is, and it's at his request that you wrote to postpone that, his plan is, he's got a meeting scheduled with the parents of the children who are intending to go. And then hopefully, and he's gonna outline all of that information tomorrow night, hopefully, the work that is continuing behind the scenes with the Superintendent Executive Committee, all of us signing on, and hopefully, the state and governor signing on. Hopefully, these companies will give some reprieve, because that, that's the hardest one is for the seniors particularly.
Through the chair, how many seniors do we know?
Seven seniors, yeah.
I mean, I think these companies have to realize that the schools are the source of their business. And if they treat the schools wrong, they might, the schools might not want to do business with them anymore.
That really is the hope, is that, you know, whether some of the organizations are more agreeable to giving refunds than others, I think it would have an impact on business moving forward.
Sure.
I would think.
I know, through the chair personally, that's what I'd want to know next year when we're approving which ones were...
Which ones accommodated the people in crisis?
And I'm sure that's going to become public knowledge, not just with the offer of everybody. It's gonna be easy to know which companies to go with.
I mean, I just know personally of a senior who had plans on going, and it was $3,200, and the family couldn't afford it, so she literally hosted her own fundraisers to raise the money, was able to do so. So, I mean, I hope these companies hear stories like that when they meet with the parents.
Yeah.
You know, these aren't like a bunch of rich kids going on trips. They're like out pounding the pavement trying to raise money, so...
Right, right.
Why don't we start with, with that one? An entertaining motion to, for the international travel.
Excuse me, we need to change that to say, to, um... Okay, yes, it does read correctly, I'm sorry.
It reads correctly on the edit.
Yes, it does, yeah.
Okay, entertain that motion.
Make a motion, in keeping with the guidance of Governor Baker, to cancel all international trips, I move that we postpone approval of the Costa Rica trip to April 2021, to try to preserve the funds that parents may be eligible for.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
One more question. So, if we're postponing it till next year, we potentially could have another foreign trip happening at the same time?
So, this would actually be for the underclassmen, so to postpone it, and that way, the money would just stay available, and they'd go next April. And that obviously would be pending any issue that hopefully doesn't arise. And then what Mr. Creamy would really need to work on is refunds for, assuming families wanted to continue to go potentially next year, to really work on the refunds for the seniors.
Yeah, I mean, but every year, don't they plan a foreign destination for people?
So, through the chair, I apologize, yes, so, in February or late January, the French students went to Quebec. And what they do is every year, the year, Quebec one year, and then France the next. So, I would anticipate that request would like...
We did approve.
We have already approved it for April of 21 to go to France. So, I think all of those approvals would be pending any issues that arose. In fact, when you, that's right, you just did approval on the France one recently, and that would be pending any travel warnings or such.
Sure.
Yeah.
So, they both, both trips would go at the same week, same week?
Um, yeah, because they'd be different students. It would be the Spanish versus the French students, yes, yes, yeah.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, it is a vote. And now, if we could address the out-of-state field trips, which is at the bottom of that page.
I'll make a motion, or...
Reprovision?
I'll make a motion as per guidance provided by Governor Baker to eliminate all out-of-state field trips. I move that we rescind approval of any such trips effective immediately.
And I second that motion.
Any discussion on that?
I think it's the safe thing to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, once again, this, this, this doesn't make us happy. This is just something that we feel that we need to do for the safety of our children. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
So, that also affects the trip to Newport on that one day, because that's in Rhode Island, right?
Yes.
So, sorry, through the chair, there are some upcoming field trips that are not out of state. I know for one, it's like the 20th of March, they're going to the Audubon. Is that something that would still go forward, or is that a day-by-day?
So, through the chair, under the large group gatherings, is to recommend, so, such as the band concert, there'll be a number of others that we're gonna need to, to work on. So, to suspend those, but to include, if you agree, even local field trips. So, we've had students just yesterday, went to the Hainault Theater from the middle school, and they're there with lots of other students, and went to Boston, string students, was that today?
Yesterday, today.
Today, you know, down to Boston, so... And, and the reason for that is, they're then going out in, with lots of other people and individuals and things, so...
From other areas.
Correct.
And who knows what they're running into.
Yeah, that's part of it.
Oh, it is, I'm sorry.
Yes, yes, yep.
Oh, large gatherings, okay, gotcha.
All right, so, let's address the large group gatherings.
Make a motion to suspend all large group gatherings until further notice, or revised guidance from Governor Baker is issued. This is to include any local field trips. I'm sorry, Caitlin.
I second that.
Any further discussion?
Through the chair, if Governor Baker comes out and says they can go back, can we add a meeting so that we can get these rolling again?
Through the chair, absolutely, and that's really why I put on there, in case the guidance changes, so that way, we could certainly put it back on to an agenda. And if they could be rescheduled before the year is out, I, I think we would absolutely do that, yes.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
And will these include, I'm just thinking like assemblies within the school with all students in one room? Are we still going forward with that?
So, through the chair, I, I would see that as just normal operation that would happen within the school, the children being together, that happens in the cafeteria every day and such. So, it's really, I think, about limiting bringing people from outside of the school in, or bringing our students out to different environments.
Okay.
As long as we stay safe.
Because they all go everywhere anyway, but, okay, never.
Yeah.
But they go on the guidance of their parents.
I mean, the weekends, the parents go to weddings. There was one in Boston where 300 people were exposed.
But then it's not on us if they get sick.
I know, that's true.
Right. So, through the chair, one other item that has since come up, and just for your consideration, you can vote tonight, or look to another meeting. The superintendents have started talking about, and I think we mentioned it maybe at today's Public Health Conference, is whether or not we want to allow outside groups to use our schools. And I'm not necessarily talking about student groups, you could certainly look at that, like apartment youth basketball, those are all of our kids. But, you know, we rent sometimes to organizations that use our facilities. So, I can certainly come back, you know, with some information for you around that. I hadn't honestly thought about it when we put this together, this has just started to come up. But you could certainly take it up at your meeting of the 25th if you wanted.
Through the chair, what's the cleaning process that our custodians are going through?
So, really, that is, that really is the issue that's being mentioned by superintendents, is that when you bring a, a large group in, there's obviously cleaning that needs to take place, and they are charged for that, and they go in and do it. But again, you're just bringing in large groups of people into our school who may not otherwise be there.
And through the chair, do we have anything scheduled between now and the next week?
So, you know, I, I honestly don't know. That I can tell you, our schools are used regularly by our youth organizations, certainly. But rentals typically come more in the late spring. But I, I don't know offhand, because it just literally came up, so I'd have to get that for you.
I mean, if we said no to renting it out, it would kind of fall under the large group policy.
Mm-hmm, it could, that's a good point, actually, yeah.
So, maybe their plans would get canceled anyway.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Do we want to add that to the large group policy right now?
I think so, in case, you know, why wait till the next meeting?
You know, and actually, through the chair, I think you raise a great point, because you're suspending all large group gatherings, and that would include...
Absolutely.
People coming in, you know, from the outside, because the language was not specific. So, I think that, I think, I think you're covered in there.
Yeah.
And we would look to check out and see what we have. I guess my question is for you, I'm, I'm thinking you're meaning that our youth organizations can continue to use it, you know, for baseball and basketball.
Yes, they're in and out of our schools all day anyway.
Okay, okay.
They're over right now anyway, right? We're in between seasons, I think.
We are, yeah.
And would that hold the same for like our outside units?
Through the chair, it sounds like the town is getting rid of recreation for right now anyway, so wouldn't that be town sports?
Actually, you raise a good point, so they are suspending activities for all recreation. The youth sports really don't fall under the recreation department. They're a separate entity of their own, so...
I think the youth sports are going to, to continue. It's, it's outdoors, it's a, it's a little bit different. These kids are rubbing elbows all day in school. I don't think that, I mean, I'm no medical expert or germ disease expert, but...
I mean, through the chair, the only thing is, then we're adding additional people. I mean, spectators come from other towns. All these parades are being canceled because of the, the, they don't know the, the percentage of transmission, but it's pretty high, it's, it's considered, what's the word? Easily transmitted versus like the flu, which is a little harder to get.
Yeah.
That's my only concern, even outside, you know? If I'm this far from Mrs. Holloway, technically, I could give it to her.
Yeah.
One thing through the chair I would share, so, MIAA, the Mass Interscholastic Athletic Association, to my knowledge, has not come out with a recommendation yet. What I can share is, and again, this is very preliminary from some area superintendents, is their intention is to continue with all regular school day activities, and to continue with after-school clubs and sports and things, because it's all our kids on their, on their campus. But I suspect MIAA may need to come out with something, you know, at the collegiate level. You know, they're playing some games and no spectators can come. My understanding is, there's a tournament scheduled, we were told through Mr. Hanfield, and he got it through our athletic director, who I would assume that if MIAA were planning a tournament at Worcester State, I think, this weekend. And they were told you can continue to have it, but no spectators can come. And so, MIAA was looking for a new venue. I don't know if they were successful in finding another place to do it, and anticipating like somewhere close to 1,200 spectators coming, so...
Through the chair, though, right now, sports within the town, there's none going on.
Correct.
Practices.
Oh, are there, and lacrosse, right? Isn't lacrosse early?
And through the chair, haven't we allowed like Quinsig to use our fields?
That's been a rental, if they've ever done it.
So, we would stop those as well.
Right, and honestly, I don't know that that's happened for a couple of years, but yeah, I would see that, I think with your large group gatherings, that stopping, that's part of a rental.
What about the lacrosse, because that's not technically Auburn, right? Isn't that the Worcester Auburn?
It's Worcester, it's Auburn-Worcester, yeah. I think the majority being Auburn, but it is Worcester Auburn.
I mean, I will say, the, the recreation department, which right now really does most of their things in the gym, the Zumba classes and fitness things like that, so those are all, have been suspended, effective immediately. To be reassessed come April 11th, should there be any updated guidance tonight. My understanding was, we reviewed the declaration from the governor, listed in there that 30 days in here we'll revisit.
Through the chair, I think the outside using the fields and stuff, maybe we do like the 30 days of lockdown, you know? I don't know, if it is a multi-town sport, it's hard to say, well, only Auburn kids can play on this field, because they rub elbows with each other all day. I don't know, I just think for 30 days, we, you know?
The, the only thing I would say to that is, is it a concern that they're gonna be affecting our, our school property outside? Because if they're not here, they're gonna be down at the park, in the parking lot, which was gonna be the plan for tomorrow night, as far as lacrosse goes. They were gonna be in the tennis courts at Horgan, or in the driveway or something at Horgan somewhere, because they didn't think that they had access to the all-turf, all-purpose field at the high school. So... So...
We don't want people running around.
So, our kids, no, our kids are going to be playing, practicing their sport outdoors, whether it's on our property or, or elsewhere.
And if it's on our property, can we just make sure that it gets sanitized after? You know, do we have...
I'm not sure what that entails.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what we would do outside. I don't, we'd never, you know, clean bleaches to that.
I'm not sure, I know I've heard it can live on surfaces, I just haven't heard about like temperature outside versus inside.
I don't think the games are going to be for a few weeks anyway. I think, I think we have some time before our next meeting to do a little bit of research on, on that piece of it.
I would hate to like ruin all of spring sports, when we don't have all the information.
Yeah. I just think, I think it's slightly different than some of the other things we're talking about, because it's outdoors. But, yeah, when it came to a point where spectators were coming from Worcester and mingling with our spectators from Auburn, then we may need to address that. But who knows what, what two weeks is going to bring, so... Continue, as Mary Ellen said, there may be some more guidance coming from the High School Sports Association.
And if anything changes, you know, things get, hopefully not, but worse in the next few weeks, we can always like schedule something.
But I think this, I think the way it's written now, I think it covers, covers a pretty broad range of, of activities. And then we'll take a closer look at our youth sports and how that's gonna play out.
Yeah, it's actually not a bad time, because there's not minimal sports right now.
Yeah. So, we already had the second. I would just say, I can't believe I remembered it, but I would just say, yeah, again, once again, not to sound like a broken record, it, it saddens us that, that we're going to be canceling these trips, and as Mrs. Harrington said, especially for these little ones. But hopefully, I'm not overstepping my boundaries when I say that we're going to try to make it up to them, Dr. Brunel. Their, their teachers, their principals, we'll, we'll try to figure out whatever we can financially to help them out, so they can do whatever, activities outside, hopefully on a nice clean field. Whatever we can do, we'll try to make all of this up to them, and it's beyond our control. Any other comments?
Just that WHO came out and said it's going to get worse before it gets better, so I think we should bear that in mind.
Yeah, well, then we're gonna, they're gonna have a grand old time right inside their classroom. All sealed up in there.
Through the chair, are we increasing cleaning within the schools?
We have, so, always at this time of year, we increase, we use those electrostatic dispenser guns that really have a higher level of sanitizing. And, so those actually, it's being done every Wednesday and Sunday at all of our schools. And, and the custodial team is just amping everything up, quite honestly. We have alcohol wipes and pads and things, and everyone is encouraged to wash their hands. They're wiping down doorways and surfaces that children are touching, so there is really a deliberate effort to try and keep everything as clean and safe as possible.
If you need any help with hand washing, I did the preschool kids.
Okay, thank you.
The older kids.
And thank you, through the chair, Meg has mentioned in the past about the iPads, those are being wiped down?
They are, and actually, I had Dr. Chamberlain check today, so they have plenty of them. So, in between each use, they're wiping down with the alcohol, and they got permission easy to use the Clorox ones you said too, yeah.
Yeah, the Clorox ones work very fast.
Because of the covers they have on them, so they can use that on the device. So, whenever they're going to put them...
So whenever they're going to put them back into the cart, they're going to get wiped down before they go back in the cart. So the next one's taking them out should assume that they're, they're clean.
Great.
All right. I know we're not in favor, but we have to be in favor, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
Sadly.
I mean, every day it gets worse.
Hopefully we start learning sometime for the local stuff.
All right, moving on.
So the Chamber of Commerce, as they always do, they made a donation based on the 50-50 raffle proceeds and $429. So it is my recommendation that you accept that with gratitude.
I'll make a motion to accept with gratitude the donation in the amount of $129 from the Auburn Chamber of Commerce.
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
Another donation that came forward, Mrs. Carrie LeBretton, she's our media specialist for Bryn Mawr and Pakechog. Let us know that through the DCU Credit Union's Kids Foundation, they're donating 50, they did donate 50 Logitech wired iPad keyboards to help her, so I want to thank Mrs. LeBretton for taking that initiative and recommend that you accept them also with gratitude.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to accept with gratitude the donation of 50 Logitech iPad keyboards from the DCU for Kids Foundation.
Second.
Any comments?
It's just wonderful.
Yeah, that's great.
It is. Thank you so much.
Make sure they wipe them down.
Before.
It might stay in the boxes for a little while.
Yeah, there's no issue with getting Clorox right now, like the wipes we're able to get them?
Well, you know what, they tend, especially the elementary schools, they tend to get tons of donations at the start of the year. So I, from what the principals told me, they are well-stocked right now.
Good.
So Jesse, do you wipe your kids down before you let them in the house?
There have been arguments over just getting them to wash their hands.
That could be the problem. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
Sharing with you as we do the enrollment projections, but did want to just clarify, and the part of it is due to the new registration process and rolling up our kindergarten students. So after the work of the primary configuration team, just to clarify, Pakechog right now has 73 students anticipated in kindergarten, and Bryn Mawr has 79, so they're really very close in numbers. And part of that has to do with the substantially separate classroom, that if you remember, we're going to put one in Pakechog. And so some of those conversations are changing these numbers, but I think we're in good shape. I believe we're in good shape still with this information.
And no issues with the lines, because that's what I've been hearing. It looks like we can keep them the way they are.
It does, yes, it does. Yep, which is great. Do these numbers include our school choice students? They do. So it's any student who's currently enrolled and just rolling them up through, so it would be students in 7th through 12th grade, yes. So that's like 100 students between the two schools? It's about 70, 80, yeah, 80, yeah, yeah.
And through the chair, what was Meg referring to, the lines?
Oh, go ahead.
Through the chair, our, we have that committee that looked at the line in town with the, looking at the schools. There was some question if there was a drastic change that we might, but if they're even, then things are going to stay the same, which will be very helpful with busing.
The 12th line.
Yes, 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 yeah.
And just wanted to share with you our AP students, student government, students worked again this year with Mrs. Grimo on the primary on Tuesday, September, excuse me, March 3rd. So you see here this note, it's just a great collaboration. It's a perfect real-world experience for our kids, and it helps the town clerk and her team there as well, so a true win-win.
That's great, I saw them there.
Yeah.
Excellent. And we now move on to unfinished business.
So as part of that addendum, the budget reduction scenario attached to it by clip is the recommendations of changes to the original budget brought forward to you. If you remember, the original request was for $27,832,658, which represented a 3.34% increase. So in collaboration with Superintendent-elect Hanfield, Dr. Chamberlain, and myself, we've met, we met in late February and reviewed these again today. This is our recommendation for reductions. So these reductions get the budget to a 2.96% increase to $27,730,341. Now to keep in mind, and as noted in the, on the addendum there, the town has asked that we bring forward a budget that is 2.75%, but we feel at this time, this is the best budget that we can do. But as noted in here, as always, we're going to continue, this is a fluid document. We do need to get out to town meeting members for the public hearing that you've set for April 8th, this number that will be in there. We're less than a quarter of a percent difference. We're hoping some more money comes out from the House. And, you know, whether that will get those numbers anytime soon, I know that they are doing some work around the COVID-19 issue as well. So hopefully we'll get some updates, or perhaps maybe even the town can come to meet us at this number, I don't know. But this is where we recommend that you go to at this point.
I would entertain that motion.
On the front, here, the addendum, it's right up at the top one, actually.
I'll make a motion to approve the revised recommended FY 2021 budget at $27,733.41, which represents a 2.96% increase over the FY 2020 budget.
You know, second to?
Any further discussion?
This is a very skinny budget, so I really think we can't go any lower.
I would agree.
I would agree also. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. And we now move on to unfinished business. No, did I?
New business, yeah, we did, that was unfinished, I'm sorry, yes.
New business. All right.
You want me to read that about this one?
Sure.
So the school committee, you've concluded successful negotiations with Mr. Hanfield, Superintendent-elect. So you do need to vote to approve his contract in open session, with the recommended motion being there.
And we've all had a chance to discuss the contract. You haven't actually taken a look at this, but we've gone over the numbers. We've gone over.
Oh, so we don't have that in front of us?
You do not have it in front of you. But it hasn't changed since what we discussed in the session. So I would entertain that motion.
Does it have to go through this meeting? Because I haven't seen the final, I just wanted to.
Yeah.
There were a lot of questions at the end of the session, and I feel like we should be able to all see the final product.
Okay, well, we can certainly put this out for two weeks.
Sure.
We know what the numbers are, so that was the biggest piece. So we'll put that off until our next meeting.
I did want to make you aware that the finance committee, Mrs. Worsbicky and I will be attending that meeting to present, excuse me, to them the budget.
Okay.
Which will reflect the, recommend the revised one that you've just approved. The next one on here is the Little Mermaid play. So that would be part of the large group gatherings. Now, one of the things I will tell you that others are discussing, and I would need to have conversations with those in charge of the play, because obviously they've been working on it, is to potentially still perform the play and have it livestreamed so that everybody could watch it at home is a potential option. But I will say typically for our plays, we have, and I would imagine for Little Mermaid in particular, would draw a crowd of young people, students across the ages. So I would anticipate, because they were planning for Friday, Saturday, and a matinee on Sunday, that they would see what they had projected. I had asked people to update how many they anticipated, and they anticipated over three days getting 800 people in the audience for that. So that is certainly a tough one, but we'll see, you know, whether it can be postponed, and hopefully things will be lifted.
Through the chair, don't they need, they rely heavily on the ticket service?
They do. Oh, true enough, yes, they do, they do. But I would say, in their revolving account, I don't know the balance right now, they may have enough money. And so it's too early to tell, I'd have to have conversations with them in order they would be able to do that.
On another thought, could they, I know they want to perform it to some sort of a live audience. Could they perform it like to Pakechog School one morning and Bryn Mawr the other morning?
Yeah, I think those are nice ideas.
So they'd have a live, they'd have a live audience of kids that would love it?
Sure.
That's true.
Yeah, I, I think that's a nice idea. They could certainly, you know, it's only a subset of the high school students that would potentially perform it to them, so I think there's going to be a lot that's going to need to be worked out on all of these issues. On a lot of these issues.
That's too bad, once again.
Yeah.
I feel like the Grinch tonight.
You know how long and hard people practice plays and things?
Right.
Yeah, and some of them only get one shot at it. Well, they've been in plays the past few years, but.
Yeah.
All right, moving on.
Does it take a vote to postpone?
No. I think that we already postponed it.
You've already postponed it, yeah, so that was in there before.
Yeah.
It was just to announce it.
All right, so hopefully we can reschedule that one.
Yes. So the High School Best Buddies Friendship Ball took place last Friday evening, and they shared a photo with us, and it looked like the kids had just an absolutely magnificent time. Special Olympics has taken place, and we had the chorus concert last night. We'll be postponing the band concert. And I will tell you that prior to these votes, they had actually postponed the spring into kindergarten until later in the spring, and we may need to even move those a little further out, and some of these things will be impacted as well.
Through the chair, have they notified the parents about the, I might have missed the email. I have a kindergarten coming up, I just don't remember seeing an email.
They were working on that today.
Yeah.
So I would say in the next day or two, you should get it. They were just making sure they had a good compiled list of emails in our one-call system.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
So that's coming.
Okay.
And through the chair, math night is also on the horizon. I don't see it on this list.
Oh, yes, that's going to have to get.
So that actually would be another thing that would need to get postponed as well. It may have been scheduled for, I feel like it was the 27th or somewhere in there.
Yeah.
Must have been beyond the.
It was beyond that, I think, I think it, or 29.
It's at the very end, yeah.
All right, we now move on to teaching and learning. Dr. Chamberlain?
Yeah, so just quickly, just to share some information with you, but during the 2018-19 school year, we did have a tiered focus monitoring review by the Desi's Department Office of Language Acquisition. So for our EL programming, for those students who are language learners. And when that review is completed, there are always some things that they want you to work on a little bit, which is not unusual. And some of those included program placement and structure, some of the forms we used for parent notification, and how we changed students' classifications based on their testing results, and all, as well as the licensure requirements for our staff to make sure that everyone had completed their SEI endorsement that they all need on their license. An overall program evaluation, which really included the writing of a formal curriculum related to English language learners, that parallels and complements our daily curriculum. So what are the expectations for students there? So I am pleased to say required several submissions this year. With the help of the EL staff and Karen Berkowitz, God bless her and her ability to pull together data from the systems that we have. It was a pretty lengthy and involved process, but I did receive notification that we are up to snuff, and they have received everything they need. So that was a very good email to receive, so. But thank you to the EL folks who helped with that in each of the buildings, as well as Karen Berkowitz, because I could not have done that without them.
Nice work.
And the only other, the next thing I wanted to share is the ESPT, which I suspect may have come to you previously. It's something that we've done for several years now at, with our eighth-grade students at the middle school and ninth grade at the high school. Letters are going to be going out about this at the end of the month. And the ESPT is the Screening Brief Intervention and Referral to Treatment Screening that takes place with our eighth-grade students and freshman students related to trying to gauge their maybe participation in or interest in alcohol, marijuana, and other drugs. It came out of the whole opioid epidemic that I think is still around, that we just don't seem to hear too much about anymore. But it's a very brief screening, it's confidential, families can opt out if they choose to not have their child screened. There's no report or anything put in a child's file. It is all kept confidential. If they feel like a child's at risk, they're referred to a guidance counselor to kind of discuss that. And if needed, information is shared with the family. There's a whole set of parameters that go along with the screening. But it is a very brief thing, but we feel very important to gauge where our students are at and to ensure that we're providing any intervention that might help them or prevent them from becoming involved in any such things. So in speaking with the guidance staff, we had a meeting a few weeks ago, they really find it very valuable and informative in helping to support kids.
Question, does it involve vaping at all? Because I know that's the new thing for.
Yeah, I don't know that there's a specific question on there about vaping, but it does address risky behavior. You know, it's not necessarily specifically asking, are you using marijuana, right? It gets to the heart of risky behavior, which would include something like that. And so, and then from there, they are referred for counseling if needed, based on the results.
Okay.
And through the chair, so the staff, was last year the first year we did this?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, that's been happening for several years back with Dr. Lozé, I think she brought that in with guidance. I want to say this might be our fourth or fifth year.
Okay, and the staff, they do find it helpful?
They do.
Like they're catching stuff?
They do, they do, very much so. And they also like that it's not really a heavy lift between guidance and the nurses in the buildings. They take a few kids, it's a very quick, it's confidential, they do it one-on-one. But they do feel it's very valuable in their support of students at that very precarious age and transition time.
And some of them just, it's a cry for help.
It is, it is, yes. And in your packet is the schedule of offerings for Friday's Professional Development Day. Just for you to take a look at what's going to be happening, I have heard, and we shall see, but there's been a lot of very positive buzz about the day in general. I happened to be at Pakechog yesterday and overheard some folks saying, oh, I got my, because we send out a kind of a menu for each person with, based on what they signed up. Oh, I got into this one, and I got into that, and I'm going to do yoga. Can we wear leggings and do we have to? Yeah, so there was a lot of buzz about it, and I believe our kickoff speaker, who's Carrie Stack, is just, talks a lot about the power of the positive and the positive impact we have and how powerful we can be when we go into things with a positive outlook on life and just how valued educators are and should well be. So I hope that it's a really, I don't know, invigorating start to the day, so. But a lot of good buzz about it, and I can't thank enough, every, all of the teachers and staff who have volunteered to offer sessions on a variety of things, so. Yeah, so I think I'm the only one having any stress about it. It'll be fine.
It does, I see cricket, that's a fun one.
Oh, that was a big one, yeah, we had a big interest in that, yeah. So cricket and meditation and cooking and disc golf, volleyball, some stair, Mount Everest stair climbing challenge, so a whole range of things, so.
That's great.
Du jour with du four, du four, du jour.
Yes, du four, du jour, yes, yes.
Well, he's got a kitchen in this classroom, doesn't he?
He does, he does.
For now, anyway.
This is for our eighth-grade students.
That's great.
Oh, there you go, yeah. Random fun, yeah. And we have a lot of staff that could help facilitate that too, yeah.
I love the PD days, PD days like that, that really are aimed at on team building and just, just a break from, you know, the typical grind. It's, it's nice.
Yeah, and even, I mean, you know, like we are doing for us, some of our new staff, some Alice training, and Bright is going to speak to the, some folks from Bright are going to speak to the entire high school staff about what the program is designed to do, but that's only a little snippet of their day. So it's like an hour, and then they're off to do other things. So there's a little bit of a balance of things, but I am hearing a lot of excitement about it, so hopefully it'll all go well. And thank you to Linda Loughlin and Kate Flynn, who have been my right hand with getting this together.
Yeah, this is a huge undertaking.
Yeah, it's a bit of a.
A lot of.
It's going to be a great day.
Kate's very protective of that brochure that you're looking at. She was like, no, I'll do it. I'll do it, I'll do it.
It had to be just right, so.
When sign making, I totally want to.
Yeah.
Well, I hope everyone has a great time and learns a little bit, and as I said, team building and building the climate, it's, I love that stuff.
Yeah, it's good.
All right, thank you for that report, and we now move on to business and financial.
So on behalf of Mrs. Worsbicky, she attended the Buddhist slackens meeting Monday evening, and I wanted to share with you that they did vote in favor of using the specialized stabilization funds, so we're working out the details of that to make you aware. In your packet is the year-to-date budget report, I'm happy to answer any questions, we are in good shape, we compare where we were last year, and we're in, we're in good shape.
Great.
In terms of transfers, I do ask for your approval, there is one transfer that requires your approval, but these just help to keep our lines balanced.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the transfers between the series as presented by Dr. Rennell.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
Next one is the revolving account balances, you see this regularly, but Mrs. Worsbicky recently learned that you need to actually accept and approve the listing of revolving accounts, all of which have been established with school committee approval over the years, so it is my recommendation that you vote your acceptance of these revolving accounts.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to accept and approve the list of revolving accounts as presented by the business manager.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Right, so that's a new rule?
So through the chair, actually, what she's shared is that it's required to be approved with a vote of acceptance, the list of them in there, so I think that may have come forward as part of the audit, I'm not sure, you're not actually approving any new ones, these are ones that have long been in place.
Interesting, we'll see all of them.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
The next item is the end-of-year auditor's report, this is done annually, as noted in here, they make, they make findings, a schedule of findings, and then you see beyond each is the management's response that Mrs. Worsbicky has addressed, so any of the minor issues that they brought forward have already been addressed, and she has filed an amendment, so that is really for informational purposes for you, but does close out FY 2019. In terms of the student activity account approvals, so you have a listing, so this is by school, the student activity accounts that are set up, and this is where funds are kept, whether it's for fundraising and it needs to be used for the specific purposes, but it is my recommendation that you vote your acceptance of this list as presented, it is required annually, excuse me, as part of the student activities guidelines, this is the first year you're doing it, but it will happen annually beyond this.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to accept and approve the current list of student activity subaccounts as presented by Dr. Rennell.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
So just in terms of bus applications, as of March 6, 307 have signed up for BusPass, compared to a year ago at this time, there were 206, so we're slightly ahead of schedule. Copies, hard copies are going home with report cards, which is scheduled to go out a week from Friday, on the 20th, so we've sent it home, and every email notification, and they will get a hard copy, and I will do a one-call likely sometime next week or so, as a reminder as well, due June 1st.
All right, that'll almost get me to do it.
I know, I was just thinking, like, that's going to make me do it. I don't even have to pay.
It's going to be a fee. All right, we now move on to policies.
So included in your packet are six policies, so the first six policies, I should say, really have minor or no changes to them, these as recommended by MASC, so it is my recommendation that you approve the above-named policies, IHAM, IHB, IHBEA, JCA, JF, and JHD as recommended.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to approve policy, the policies, above-named policies as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
And then finally, the attendance area policy on first reading, so this really just shares it something from Desi, we did not have one on the books, just that you really decide as a committee the primary considerations, and it's back to that Rule 12, the attendance areas, just gives you that authority, which you have.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve policy JC, attendance areas on first reading.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. And do we need an executive session?
We do a very brief one, yes.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion for an executive session per Mass General Act after 30, Section 21A2, to conduct strategies for negotiations with union and non-union personnel.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Will call vote?
Mrs. McRillis?
Yes.
Mrs. Holloway?
Yes.
Mrs. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Scobie?
Yes, it is a vote. Good night, everyone.